I would like to bring to order the June 14th, 2023 work session, special meeting agenda of the Harris Township Supervisors. Please rise with the place of allegiance.
Doesn't say that.
I apologize to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
There are no minutes to approve, so we'll move on. Do we have any citizen comments? Anybody here to comment on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing none? Seeing none? Any on the Zoom? Hearing none? Okay, let's move on. New agenda items. Other than what's on the agenda, don't any of the supervisors have anything they'd like to add?
I'm not going to add this agenda, but there will be a discussion or a information about the, about the, what the hell do they call it now?
Okay, we'll give you, we'll give you two minutes at the end.
I've got a couple random items we can talk about before we.
You'll get three minutes. Because I know what that is. We're going to give him two, we'll give you three.
I made each four.
Okay, at the end, I'll write that in.
I move to approve the use of the Volksburg Fire Police on July 2nd, 2023 for traffic patrol for Ironman 70.3 Triathlon.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to point out that in our letter we received, Harris Township is not even mentioned. And at the same time Monday, the point was made that they're coming to Harris Township and need our fire police at the Rock Hill Road intersection, not in the letter.
They screwed up. They took a letter that they sent to College Township and added Volksburg and sent it out.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have any other comments or anything on that?
Provide public safety.
Okay, I think we can pass that, even though it doesn't have the Harris in it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They will be in College Township also.
Yeah, they'll be in College also.
The Fair Place, the Volksburg.
They owe us the courtesy of seeing in that letter.
Peter, would you let them know that they made that mistake?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to board approval, parking lot design. That's this drawing. Do you have a copy? You need to share with me.
Couple of you will have to share because they're not enough.
Here, I can give you this.
No, no, we're good. We're good. They got one, we got one, and Bud's got his own. Because, you know, he doesn't share well.
I need one?
Yeah, he doesn't share well.
I have two.
Two is what you should have, yeah.
So are we going to have, is this gentleman going to do it, or are you going to do it?
I want to start.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason we're doing this is I want to get going on this. I want to, and we need approval of the board on a plan. And we have two plans. The only difference with the plans are some of these islands are removed and we've picked up space. We're not obligated to put in the islands at all. And they'll just make it difficult for plowing snow and sweeping, et cetera. It's in a, it's in a place which is hidden behind buildings. It's not in a big public place. So I personally recommend that we adopt the first plan, but, you know, either one, whatever the board wants, but I would adopt the plan that's on top. And with that, Kim, you want to, you want to just explain?
Yeah.
I know.
Yep. So the first plan in the packet that's stapled together, the one that's on top, that was the plan that was put together after review and removing the islands. That plan currently shows lives 25 parking spaces and two ADA designated stalls. The ADA designated stalls are on the west, northwest corner of the parking lot. I believe that's, we had met at some point, and that's where it was discussed. Oh, yeah, there we go. That would be the second. If you go to the next tab.
Yeah.
Who moves the spots?
Deb's doing this.
Oh, okay. Oh, Deb did it. Oh, she's all right.
Well, I can keep going while she gets things zoomed.
Which one do you want, Kevin?
If you can just zoom, zoom out a little bit.
Do you want the 613 drawing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the current. That's the one that we, that I'm recommending, right there. But there's another one which you wanted up.
Yeah, we've got it behind there.
And the other, the other one was, was presented to the board in, I believe, your March meeting, when I was first here. The only difference between the two plans is the inclusion of the islands.
No.
And the ADA spots.
You did not have ADA. So actually, you pick up three, three spots with the new plan.
Yes, the number of spots, I had an ADA over here in that 313 plan.
Oh, yes, you did. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Number 19.
Yes, there was one ADA stall, and we said we should have two.
Yep. And actually, with removal of the islands, it bumps you into two per code.
Okay.
With code, it's one to 25 require one ADA spot, and over 25 needs two. I included two because you said about not having any, and if you remove one, you're at 26, and it requires two, so.
Gotcha. And I wanted to mention that I talked to, I put it in the memo, but I wanted to talk, I talked to State College Borough to see if they would be willing to include charging stations with their bid. Because they are, because of the students' low income, and that gives points for your bid. They said, yes, let us know. I said, we'll, I'll know after Wednesday if the board approves it. You can add us to your, your proposal for a grant. So.
I'm sure it does.
I was suggesting three. This won't happen until next year, but we can put in the conduit now. So that when, when we do get it, and I, I expect that we will, we can, we won't have to dig up anything.
When you do charging stations, can they exclusively be used by electric vehicles, or can anyone park in them? Is the similarity between an ADA and an electric parking spot the same?
The only designation on the electric parking spots, to my understanding, would be if there's a charging station sitting in front of it.
There's no sign that says.
There, there might be a sign that says, designates it that, hey, this is a charging station, and whatever stipulations the township or you, the word put on it.
But could you park in an ADA spot, in an electric spot?
Yeah, there's no, there's no law against parking. There is for ADA, but not for.
Okay.
So, so what I'm recommending is the first plan plus approval to ask the borough to include Harris Township in their grant application.
The boroughs put in a grant application?
They are, for themselves. And they have a real edge because they're lower income. And that, that's points.
These charging stations where they charge the park, charge it. I know in Beaver, Beaver.
You can, you, you can get them, I think, where you pay money to do it.
Yes, we pay money, yeah, okay.
I mean, I would, for the public ones, I would do that, but it's up to you. I mean, this is let next year.
Yeah, we're not at that point.
We don't have to.
I'd have some questions on charging stations. Number one, would charge any type of car? And number two, who's paying?
Okay, I can answer the first one. GM and Ford have agreed to use the same apparatus that, what's it? Yeah. So, so they're going to be uniform in the near future. That won't be a problem. As far as who pays, if you get a charging station, we have to put money in, then.
What's credit card or?
They pay, or a credit card, yeah.
Or, or you can belong to a club.
Okay, I don't, I don't know that much about them. All I know is, when I went to charge, you had to put in money. So, so you can get them that, that you pay.
Well, I think having the infrastructure in place to do that, you don't have to do it today, is a good idea.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I'm going to move that we approve the parking lot design without the islands and with the two ADA spaces and the infrastructure to support charging stations in the future. And we asked the manager to work with the borough to look at including three charging stations in the borough's grant application.
I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Well, the only discussion I have is that's. I, I'd asked about the impervious, impervious, but as long as SS, Stormwater Manager's handle, I guess it's irrelevant. I know there is some shrubbery along here.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm glad you mentioned that, because it has nothing to do with the matter before you. I mean, you can approve that, but I want to talk about.
Well, at least that would give us, that would be impervious area.
Yes, that would, that would be.
And this is where the tree is out there.
It's really not going to change much on the runoff, because it came off a roof before, and it was paved lots. So the impervious nature is not going to really change.
I think we're already well over our number. I think we're at like 70 or 80% impervious. I think we're beyond the, we're beyond the.
An existing nonconformity.
Yes, we are very, in the existing.
I mean, as a township.
In fact, I think we're the worst.
As a township.
Yes.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't even considering that. I thought, but.
It's not going to change that.
Correct. And the stormwater, what Mr. Marshall said is corrected. There is no net increase to the impervious area. And I think I did have a note on the plan stating that. So there is no stormwater changes.
Let me ask you a question with respect to, when the maintenance guys were washing their trucks, we have stormwater running toward the building. Was it diverted to the side somehow, or do, is the corner of that building causing any kind of stormwater issue?
I am not aware of when they were washing things. So I have not witnessed them washing vehicles back here. All the parking lot grading has a soft spot, a swell, that's taking water out.
Okay.
Towards the inletts in the front. So the original plans that I had passed off to Tippett, and I believe what he has in the grading, still hold that general slope that water in the back moves through that center swell section out to the front. And I don't recall Todd or Deb ever discussing any major icing issues in the parking lot out back either. So I don't know if Deb wants to chime in, or.
We don't want to get into stormwater, the flight of the boat.
Well, when it comes down, it goes around bringing a laser out front of the curb, so our customers have to step in it when they come in.
Right. All right, before, before we go on, Diane, you had something. Come to the microphone, please.
I'd like to digress to the charging stations. I will admit, number one, I do not know anything about charging, other than I realize, as you all do, that there are several speeds of charging. And I, my interest in the speeds of charging has to do with when you approach, when we begin the discussion on hours of which this lot will be for public. So my question to you is, do you know if the borough is doing a one, two, or three speed?
I'll tell you truthfully, this is next year's problem for, for me. I don't know what the boroughs, they don't know.
Well, maybe the infrastructure has to be, maybe the wiring has to be different.
Well.
So anyway, that, that's my question. I'm just putting it out there, because I understand that there are certain conditions that need to be met. That's all.
Well, the installation of the utility would simply be the conduit.
Yeah.
Not the wire.
Yeah. It would be. You're going to have conduit, so you can do whatever makes sense.
Yeah, just to clarify, what's in the, shown here would just be the conduit, and typically they'd install pull rope. And then, you know, when the charging station company comes in, or whoever's wiring those out, they would pull the wire through. There may be some background information. You are correct. You might want to reach out to GM, Ford, Tesla, just to confirm, based on the biggest load, what size conduit. Do you need three inch, two, two inch, five inch? Just to confirm that.
That's something you should call.
Yeah, that's what I'm, and I have that on my list. But I just wanted to bring that up, just to further, further along the conversation.
The one thing that we might want to do a little different here, and we talked about it, and kind of decided not to, but you may want to bring a conduit across to the other side of this, just in case.
We did talk about it.
We did discuss that, yeah.
I don't remember what we decided, or why we went one way or the other.
So we could put lights in on the other side, should we want to in the future.
There is a light proposed, I'll say, up here at the corner.
Yeah.
And.
The both corners here and there.
Yeah, well, one there, this I threw in there, because originally it was in the island.
I saw that.
That could be, I guess, building mounted, depending. And then there was one kind of in each corner, the four corners, basically.
Well, my concern is that we don't rip up pavement to put in more conduit later, yeah, sure. So if we got it over to the other side.
Can we leave that open?
Yeah, because we got it over to the other side. We can run through the ground, run through, I mean, that's not a, we don't have to redo the parking lot.
Right, right.
I don't see the problem.
As far as the charging stations, there's three, basically. There's type one, which basically you plug into your house, plug into your car overnight. Type two is probably two to four hours, depending on your car. And a type one can be as low as 40 minutes to an hour.
That's it.
And the problem is, is the, the higher the type, if you're doing the one that's 40 minutes, it's going to require some juice. The faster you go, the more juice is going to go through that line.
And that's for a full charge. You don't have to have a full charge.
Right, well.
If you have two hours to spend.
I think, I think the big thing we have to, to start thinking about, we don't have to do it tonight, but what we do have to think about is, if we put these charging stations in, and people start saying, I'll just plug my car down there, and I'll plug it in, leave it in overnight.
That's why you need a rule.
And that's why we're going to have to have some, some regulations, rules.
That's why you charge money.
Well, even if you charge money, what if there's three people that want to do it? One guy plugs in, and he's there all night.
Well, he won't be there all night.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's some things we have to think about.
Here's one thing I'd like to bring to the board at the next meeting. We've had a case where there's an RV parked in one of our parking lot park. I want, there's nothing in the code that says you can't park overnight. So I would like to bring an ordinance change which provides that you cannot park in our facilities, our parks, overnight.
And no, no camper, two, either Peters or one? No overnight parking, plus no camping?
No, that's already in there.
Is it? Okay.
But, but no overnight parking is not in there. And we're the only place that doesn't have that.
All right, well, that's something you can bring at the next one. Okay, we have a motion on, on the floor to approve this with, with all the conditions that Bruce had mentioned. Do I hear any other discussions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Yes, go ahead.
I can't see the bottom of the plan.
Oh, here. Can you move that up a little bit, Deb? There you go. There it is.
So is this the alley? I'll wait till it holds still. Is this the alley? Yes, this is Chambers Alley. So could you point out where that lights are? Because we have people that live right on the other side of the alley. So that's why this is of great importance.
One is proposed there at the bottom, and one there.
But we also have a lighting ordinance that.
Excuse me?
We have a lighting ordinance, ordinance that speaks to not being able to see the light.
Yeah, I know. I'm familiar with that, and it's focused down and all that kind of stuff. But you're only talking about a little alley, and you've got the light right there, right across from the neighbor's property.
But it can be directional, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, sure.
So please, okay, I'm just asking, please.
Well, it's, it's going to be an issue, because what is directed was indirect. Walked around the Unimart, and you saw which is directed, which.
Well, the Unimart, they're not.
Well, it's a light, but I.
I know, but you can.
We have to shield it. We'll have to do something.
You do shield it.
We can shield it.
Okay, so a slight tangent, but in conjunction with this, on Monday, I sat with other people in the audience. We had, could not see anything up on the board up there. I have no copy of the plan. And I would really like you to address trying to include your citizens that come to these. And, you know, I'm excluded, because I don't have the plan.
You're included now, aren't you?
I am, but only because you and I discussed this issue. So if you could consider that in the future, that would be very helpful. And also.
You're asking, like, we had copies of these plans.
I'm asking that you, this is very beneficial. This is very helpful. If plans in the future, if plans, if you're going to discuss plans, don't you think your audience should be able to see what they are?
Well, I don't know that. It's not, it's not the honest decision.
Well.
I mean.
That, that, I'm willing to set this aside, if you want to discuss it later.
Our manager, and I'll ask for some of them, she'll get them for you. They're like three bucks a piece, but we'll, I don't know who's going to pay for it.
She'll get it for you? Come on, come on.
Our manager will get it. What pronouns are you using right now?
The same one I always use. It'll get it for you.
Let me ask the question. When, when, when you can go to get, get our agenda offline, aren't those plans included in the agenda?
No, they're not. I know that. You're right. There's so much interest, and just get, get a hard copy the same as us.
Oh, okay. All right.
We can respond.
What we might have to do is, is we might have to do it upon request. If you want a plan, a prompt request, you get, give a request, and we'll get you a plan.
Well, I went to see the township manager, and he showed me the plan.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
So I think we're getting off base here. I think, I think simply a statement that says that if you require additional information, contact us, and we will provide it.
Or if we can do this, if we have something that we can do, we'll do it.
All right, let's move on here, because like I said, we want to get, we want to get our stuff here.
It will do it.
Okay, next on the agenda is the board approval to move forward with window replacements. And.
Did we vote on this?
We did. We, it's in the budget. This is the one.
You can not vote on this.
Yes, we did, yeah.
Yeah, you voted in favor.
Well, I did vote.
Yeah, we all voted on that one, didn't we?
Yeah, I got a check mark.
Okay, we got a check. I wrote pass.
Got a check mark.
I wrote pass.
We did it.
Okay. So anyway, we were originally talking about these windows in the, in the room here, and we put them on the budget, or on the current year's budget. And they were approved on this year's budget to replace these windows in here. Since then, I think, Peter, you found some other ones in the office that are out here in Dodd's place, and that are same type of windows. So that's kind of what we're, we're talking about here, how would it move forward. But I think the first thing, and, and I think Peter and I have talked about this, first thing we got to find before we can do any window replacements, we got to find a contractor. And that's the hardest part, you know, finding somebody, not just a contractor, but somebody qualified.
We would have to put that out to bid.
We, we would have to put it out to bid, but, but again, just to find a contractor, I mean, you can find a contractor, you can put it out to bid, you might not get any back.
Oh, you, you will, you will, sure you will.
But we want people that qualify.
Well, whoever, who's going to make the bid specifications?
What do you mean, who's going to make the bid specifications?
For the windows.
Well, we, we haven't decided on what they are yet, but.
Well, we better decide.
The first thing, okay, listen to me, listen to me. I've done a big, a big gazillion.
Settle down, Frank, settle down.
You can't, the first thing we're going to have to do on these windows, because I'm guessing behind those walls, they have the big old weights on there, the old type of windows. And the first thing we're going to have to do is tear one of these out and find out what's behind it, before we can even think about, well, the type of window. So probably we're going to tear one out and put a piece of plywood up there until we figure out how to put it back together. And then we can get it bid.
We, I'm sure we have to have an engineer for this. I'm sure.
No, we don't have to have an engineer, but we have to have somebody that tears it apart. Contractor, whoever's going to end up doing the job.
Who is going to bid on the job?
I just want authorization to move forward, to answer these questions that you're asking.
Yeah.
Who, who is going to put?
We have, Frank, we, when we talked about this last year, we had not considered the specificity of a window?
No. Well, we, yes, we did. We did quote a window. We quoted one window to look at to see what the cost was.
We only, one window?
Well, they're all the same size then. All these were the same. We were doing nine windows in here, is what the quote was.
One company, one brand or whatever?
It was one brand. And, and we could get that brand without having to put it out for bid.
Okay.
Because it's a Co-Stars company.
Do we need to do multiple bids, or do an FFP?
You don't need to do it if we get. You don't need to do it if we get something that's on Co-Stars.
Yeah, I could get Co-Stars.
Installation, you do have to go to bid.
The installation, we.
It was more than.
Oh, okay.
It was more than $10,000.
But again, I don't know that until we find out what's behind these windows.
What windows are on Co-Stars, Pete?
The, the actual window, the material, the actual window materials, we can get on Co-Stars, which is what we want to do because then whatever window we decide, we can specify that window. We can say, we want this window, this brand window, this type of glass, this type of this, and we can specify it. If you don't, and you put it out to bid, then you have to take or equivalent. And 99% of the time, the equivalent doesn't get what you really want.
We don't know what brands are on Co-Stars now?
What's that?
We, we don't know what brands are on Co-Stars?
I do. Marvin's on, I can get Marvin on Co-Stars. I can get just about any window on Co-Stars.
I, I've put Marvin in my window, in my house.
So did I.
I could put Anderson, Marvin, any of the vinyl, I could put any window on, on Co-Stars. You want, you want the what they have out at the code office, Colby, Colby's, we can get them on Co-Stars if you want them.
Okay, I move that the board authorize the manager and the chair to move forward, move forward with replacing one window.
No, all the windows.
All windows.
And then determine, well, I'm saying one window and then determine how we proceed.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
What we want to do is start the process, but that's what he's quoted.
I think you're making it more complicated than it really is, but yes, go ahead.
Well, it's, you know, then we, then we know, do we need to put it out to bid? Don't we need to put it out to bid? We know a lot more than we do now. Now we know we want to replace windows. That's all we know.
Yep.
So.
Well, I, yeah, that's a good motion.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, sidewalks. Who's going, oh, you're going to let Jerry do the sidewalk? Well, we're going to both do it because I, I don't know what Jerry has.
Want me to introduce sidewalks?
Yeah, sure, why not? I mean, we have, everyone has this.
Blue sheet?
The blue sheet, which is really the report, which tells us, I thought you were going to talk about the.
The dashboard.
The dashboard.
Yes, we can do that. So let me give a, your, your brief two-minute rundown of where we've been and where we're going. Historically, the township has gone around the village and replaced $12,000 to $15,000 worth of sidewalks every year. We look at some of the most dangerous areas, we target those, we replace those. A lot of your sidewalk area damage is instituted by some of your very nice trees, so it's a, it's a competing situation. The process by which we've been working our way around the village, doing $12,000 at a time. Originally, there was a long-term plan of finishing these sidewalks and giving them to the residents. And the pace at which we're moving is not, not expeditious and not keeping up. And then you have very significant liability issues around the township as well. You have areas that are separated two inches, three inches, four inches. There are severe tripping hazards. And if we can only, as engineers, get budgeted to do one a year and we have eight or nine lined up, we're behind the eight ball. So, working with Peter, we've looked at areas that are in pretty significantly poor shape. We've looked at areas that are degrading, that are kind of on the horizon for what we'd need. We've looked at areas where sidewalks are missing or sidewalks would be a, a good connector. 241 West Main Street comes to mind. It's a missing piece of sidewalk right at Blue Spring Park that, you know, sidewalk goes up and it just stops. And you would have to walk out into the road and West Main Street to walk into the park. So it, it's, even the curb already has a curb cut for an ADA ramp right to it. So there's logical places.
You say Pine Street?
No. Main.
Main Street.
Yes.
Walk off the.
241 West Main. So what we've done as your engineers is go around and try to target what's critical mass, what's the liability issue to the township. We've targeted what's coming apart and probably isn't going to get you another three years. It's going to be a liability issue next year, if not already. And then targeting long-term plans and kind of these segmental type things. So Shane in our office and his GIS capabilities, he's created a map. It's on the web. You have the link that's in here. I'd encourage you to take some time to look at that. But you can go to, write to any section of sidewalk and click on it, and it'll show you a photograph of that section and its condition and that type of thing. So he's done a great deal of work to map this and kind of determine priority-wise, what sections to start with and what sections are, are worse separated. So that's the logical background of it. The financial aspects of it is that it's a, it's a heavier lift than you've historically engaged in. So that's the background and Peter's itching to.
Well, no, that is the background.
Yep.
And you're right. And you've, you've done a good job. The sidewalks here, this should be a real walkable community. Of all the places I've been, this is a place where you should be able to walk. And you, you, you can't. You got to go out in the street in a bunch of places. And if you're going to continue to do what you're doing, which is $15,000 a year, you're never going to get ahead of it. What I would suggest is Jerry and I get together, Jerry's done the, the work on the condition, and I can help figure out a way to pay for it. But you're going to have to, if you, if you want to do this, now, if you want to leave everything like it is, that's fine. But I think that's a mistake in a bunch of ways. The, the ordinance is very clear. The ordinance says that if the sidewalks on your property were in the right of way, if it's in the right of way, you're responsible. If it's not, if it's on your property, as a property owner, you're responsible. But we don't enforce anything, as far as I know. When I first came, the first week, I got a complaint about 128 West Main on sidewalks. So I went down and looked at it. It was horrible. I mean, it was big slabs of concrete, glue just sitting there. And so I had Public Works take it out and put in fine stone, which was 100% better, but it was temporary. I, I would like to make a plan for your review, which would also show how to pay for some of this stuff without a lot of burden. I know you, you have some problem with borrowing money, but borrowing money is not a big deal, especially if you're already paying $15,000 a year. You know, you just, you put that as payment on the loan. And you get it all done. Now, there are some real tricky areas here. For example, it looks like there's porches that go all the way out to the right of way. I'm not sure where the right of way is. I was looking at that today, and I, we have to find out for sure.
There absolutely are.
There are porches in the right of way.
In the right of way.
Yes.
Okay. But when you hit that, you've got to go out to the street. And then, you know, there's a way that we could do a bump out. There's ways to deal with some of this stuff that's safer than what you have right now. So I think personally, that I would like to get your go-ahead to put together a plan that would show you how we could do some of this stuff. But I'm not going to do it if you don't want to do anything.
Well, I'd be interested in seeing it. I'll say that, you know, by the time we pay for police, for fire protection, our employees, and our cog, and our debt on the municipal building, we've got a little bucket left. So we've got roads to take care of, we've got sidewalks to take care of. I'm interested in hearing it. Personally, I walk down the middle of the street.
That's where Bales does.
Well, that's do nothing then. That's okay.
No, no, I, I, I just, I just want to see, I want to see. I'm, I'm, I am interested in seeing it and seeing it in the public for next year.
I'd like to see. The, the issue is that, that's, if you're, you're looking basically on Main Street is where you're working.
Well. Main and Pine.
Main and Pine.
Pine is, there are few sidewalks.
Pine's low traffic.
Please sidewalks on Pine are very few. But Main Street is usually what the big complaint is. But as long as, Dennis, as long as you have trees growing, as long as you have, if you wipe out all the trees, you're okay. As long as you have trees growing, you're not a disruption. And the only way to get over that is, is to, this is funny because I would, I just might, like, I did Yogi Berth in Déjà Vu or again. I sat here probably in 1968, and this discussion was going on. Bob Horner was the chair. He's long been long dead. And we discussed this very same thing about sidewalks. And as long as you have trees growing, what, what was recommended back then, and Gary McShay was just newer around here, and he had done some, you get down, you get down, you pour concrete, you, and then you put sidewalks on a base, either on a stone base or a concrete base, and you put sidewalks on top of that. And that gives you a little more effort. So I'm curious to see what plan we can come up with that would work on, in this, in this area. We're right now basically talking a little bit of Pine, not much, but mostly Main Street, I guess, will.
Yeah, I highlighted 12, 12 areas on that last page. And that far right column is how far displaced they are. So when we, you know, in our code, we say if it's more than three quarters of an inch, somebody should be out there repairing it. We're talking three and four inches of trippable hazards in some places. So, yeah.
So that's an obstacle we have to get around.
Right.
And, and I do know that disrupting tree roots will definitely kill trees. So.
Yeah, you don't want to do.
We'll see what, I'm curious to see what plan to come up with. I would like to be able to have a nice, not look this way going down through there. But everybody walks the streets anyhow, so.
Well, it's, it's a lot of work. So actually, if you don't think it's going to.
Well, I'd like to see some plan, something going on because.
Okay, let's, let's go, Danny. What do you?
The, the art funds. The art fund, $500,000.
Yes.
That has to be committed by the end of '24 and spent by '26.
I think that's right, but I, I can't tell you for sure.
Can't for the $500,000?
Sure.
Well, well, stop before we go into, to Bruce's point. We are going to, if we're going to do this plan, Dwight has to be involved because we, we remember, we still have Mary Elizabeth Street to pay for. And I don't know how much that's going to end up being at the end, but, but there's a lot, big chunk of that art fund that's going to go over there. So we will get some of it back, but I don't know how long that'll take. So before we, you know, I, I have no problem with a plan. I'm like Bruce. I'd like to see a plan, but I think you better bring Dwight in on that plan to see what funds we have available. And, and we may have to jock, jockey some stuff around. If we can't get these windows done this year, I think we have $30,000 or $40,000 in the budget for that that we could move over and swap that around.
$30,000 is a good cut, is it?
So, so we might have to do some juggling. So yes, I would like to see a plan.
Well, let's get a master plan and we can work from there, sure.
And that's Dwight, what other sources we're getting for the Mary Elizabeth? Because the counties go a chunk in.
Yeah, we're not going to spend anything for that, that intersection.
Eventually. We'll get it back through the tip. We, we have a delayed tip repay.
And we have basically a half a million dollars in, in that fund now. So it's not like you're not going to have any funding.
Well, I think we have, we have allocated some of it, but I don't remember what we allocated it to. But, but if you get Dwight to.
I talked to Dwight about it.
A breakdown on that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's bring us some more information. I agree with moving forward on it and seeing what's possible.
Okay, any other questions you might have on that? Anybody else have anything they want to?
May I ask one question?
Yes.
We had earmarked money to do a sidewalk project this year to extend from Pine Street, what we did last year, down through to where this eight-inch push-up is resting. Is that something that we are continuing this year?
Yeah, I believe that. That was in the budget.
It's in the budget, though.
It's in the budget.
Pine Street or Main Street?
I'm talking Pine Street. Across from the post office, there's a tree that has two pieces significantly uprooted. So we would, we'd bring in, we've talked about using Lance from the borough as a arborist to give us an opinion on what we can do to make that section work without hurting the tree. So.
Make sure you let our shade tree commission.
Well, I'll tell you, the shade tree commission is cognizant of this problem in terms of future plantings and, and going after species that will not create this down the road.
Yeah.
But I'll be dead before that's an issue.
Bruce, you got to be optimistic.
I am.
Either that or in Australia.
Yeah.
What, what do we allocate per year for something, 15?
15 is the most I've seen you allocate in four years.
So we have seven earmarks for the 113 Pine, 129 Pine.
The numbers here are what I believe it would take this year to do an emergency sidewalk project. If you wanted to go eliminate the four and a half inch issue at West Pine Street, 129 West Pine Street, you'd have to allocate about $3,500 bucks just to do a couple squares right there to get the squares out. Now, that's not putting everything in exactly where it needs to be. That's resolving your liability issue.
But those top three still don't add up to $50,000.
We could do just Band-Aids, but they're not tied into necessarily elevations that you want to be at long-term. So do we want to do Band-Aid projects? Do we want to do something that's going to last us 20 years? That's, the, the numbers here are to do liability Band-Aids. They're, they're not a proper sidewalk from end to end across the property.
Well, I, I think, yes, I think from the liability and everything we're talking about, I think we do need to have a plan. And that plan would include repair and, and a timeline and also a financial part of it. So if you bring that to us, then we can.
We need a plan.
Yes, we need a plan. So go ahead, go ahead, Peter, and do a plan.
Do a plan.
It may, I may not be here for that, but.
Oh, you, you should tell them what you guys drink today.
Anyway, yeah, okay. We'll, we'll move ahead with that.
Okay, this next one I think is pretty easy. The former Public Works Maintenance, that's the little garage out back here. I, I know if we, if we keep it, we're, we're going to have to do something to the siding because it's starting to rot off on the back side there.
Yeah, we need to fix it up.
So I guess the question is, do we want to keep it? And I don't know, I'm not for tearing buildings down.
Well, Dawn, Dawn would like to keep it. And it makes sense, really, because we have a vehicle, at least one vehicle.
Yeah, and, and we could take turns parking our cars in there in the winter times.
It's a new cosmetic.
Yes, it does.
It does.
Serious cosmetic.
Which we would do. If you say yes, we're going to keep it, we'll start to.
Okay, yes.
Work on it.
Anybody object to keeping it?
We should keep it.
Yeah, we're going to keep it. So go ahead.
We might go and throw something down the road.
All right.
At the end, can I, can we add to that some removal of unwanted items around the building?
Around the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's unwanted items around a building, we can get rid of them.
Two or four tires stained there, pile of concrete blocks.
Yeah.
All of which should have been moved when we opened the new maintenance facility.
Part of this stuff is to clean inside, so cleaning outside makes sense.
Inside and outside.
Yeah.
Along with that, this little building back here, I think it could, needs revitalized. It's, it's a nice little building.
Which building?
This little.
Right here.
Well, they call it the sign shop.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It can be revitalized, and that could be used for something.
Yes.
We're, we're talking about bringing in library drop-offs and things like this. That can be a perfect spot for something like that inside that. A little bit of work.
You need some work on this building.
Guys, guys, the price of poker is going up every time we say we want to do something. So we're going to have to make a decision at some point.
The other thing back there, it needs all the stuff pulled out of there, then we can work, see what we're working with there.
And I think you can get through to that door.
No.
Does that door, does that door right there?
That goes outside the.
All right, are you guys ready now to go on?
Goes outside, oh, don't fret, geez. Are you, you have a date tonight or what?
Bruce does.
Yes. Yes, to the side shelf through that door.
Yes.
There's two doors there.
Two doors, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there are two doors there. Okay.
All right.
Okay. One question to go back on this plan again that I've neglected to ask. You know this ramshackle building next door, the long building, that's, that's this piece? We, we show, there's a five-foot strip there.
I think we're talking about the building we're just talking about.
No, no, no. This is the one that's in the background.
Oh, the neighbors, the neighbors, oh, okay.
There's a question whether we should do a fence or do landscaping, which is not going to be great because it's only five feet and it's a continual maintenance problem, or some combination of landscaping on the, on the end, the front end, that, that you can see from the street. But I don't know what you might want to do, but I, I would suggest maybe a fence and some landscaping on the two ends.
Well, I think that, I think that if you put that in the proposal, we could, we could look at it then.
Yeah, okay, well.
Because I, I don't know, personally, just looking, I don't know which one would be better.
Is there concern about headlights shining into the driving property?
Yeah, yes, that's right.
There's, it's solid now.
That's right.
It's solid wall now.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't have to do anything, really. Quarter of that bill.
Yes, go ahead.
To hop in, the ordinance does require that there's screening from headlights spilling onto the neighboring property. So there is the sheds right now, however, they are technically on the neighbor's property. Where exactly, how close they are to the line, I don't know. But something would need to be done, whether it's, something needs to be done to screen headlights from spilling on the neighbor's property.
That would be part of the project.
When we come to that, we'll ask.
Okay.
Do we, this is a strange question, but it's good, may come in, do we know where our property line is for sure? How do we know that? They surveyed it.
Yes, Don Franson surveyed it.
Don surveyed it?
Yes, and there is a pin, I know there's a pin in the back, and I believe I saw the pin in the front.
Well, the pin in the front is, was in, was item of contention. So as long as we are convinced or we are satisfied that we've surveyed that that is our property, we're okay. But that was an item of, and, and, and in the growth of Bollesburg, we're not sure exactly where that is. And it was contended by that, the old neighbor over there, that we were so many feet on his property. Well, we weren't, I don't know. We didn't care. But, but in the future, when, if that property changed hands, whatever, we want to make sure that before we put anything on there, that it is our property. So as long as you're convinced that is our property and we can defend it, I'm happy with it.
Yep, yeah, it was surveyed, surveyed by.
All right. Moving on, we have two additional, Bud, you had a comment you would like to make? We'll let you go first.
Well, I, I, three, one of them was this little building back here, I think we resolved we're going to clean, get the stuff out of there, then go work on it.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing, just get whatever's there, get it out of there and see what's there because it can be used for different things.
Yeah.
The only, only thing I wanted, I'm, I'm thinking about this, this Tuesday, this discussion we had with Walt Schneider, and I, I don't get it necessarily. A couple of questions I want to, I will have to ask is, why are we changing the name from, from rental housing and property maintenance to building safety code? What was the reason for the name change? That's up to the flag. And then the second up the flag, were the additions that came across there, there, there were in sections 8033 up to 17, which, which is in, 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 I don't know, it's not, doesn't jive with, with the Pennsylvania housing law, why it's even in there? Walt said he met with rental advocates, but it doesn't make sense. And I know it's going to be questioned about it.
The tenant section?
The tenant, yeah, the tenant section. I know it's going to be questioned. It, it's already, it's already state law. It is landlord-tenant law 68 PS, 101, so on and so for the state. So why it's, why are we going, changing, why is our code, rental housing code, changing directions from safety codes to tenant advocates? And I'm not sure we want to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure we told, instructed Mr. Schneider to pull those out.
We're pulling out of our part of it, but that means if, if the rest, it's in there for the rest of the community, it's not going to affect us that much either way. But it's going to affect the whole, I don't, I don't know, I'm thinking we're going the wrong way on this generally.
Well, I can answer part of what you asked. In cases, and, and this is cases in the, in the Borough, not here, where landlords have not done what, what they should have done.
In what respect?
Well, many things.
Well, give me an example.
The heat wouldn't go above $50.
Okay, that is property maintenance, that's covered.
It is, but, it is.
Yes.
I mean, but on some of the other items, where the, the tenant code, state law does provide, these, some of these people don't have enough to take it to court. I mean, they don't, they're not knowledgeable enough, they don't have money.
In what respect don't they take it to court now?
In what respect, they just, they don't, they don't know.
Well, for instance, a lot of these are, these are contradictory to what the state law is. Now, Walt has a couple of things in there that are actually contradictory, but I'm not a lawyer, but I did say at the Halliday Express the other night, so I'm, so I know what I'm reading here. And one of these, he's contradicting himself about three times. What case law holds, what standing does, would he have in court? None, zero. Because he is stating, he is stating case law, Pennsylvania case law, he has no standing in this.
He's going to, no, he just, they pull the rental permit.
They, yes, that's the issue, but they're, but that's not his, it's not.
Hold on, hold on.
That's not his, that is not his bailiwick to do that.
I'll tell you, you know, we have the ability to modify that to suit us.
We do for us, yes.
And I don't want other municipalities telling us what to do, and therefore I don't feel comfortable telling, if the other municipalities want to adopt that, that's fine with me.
Well, that, that's true, we're, we are, we, he's agreed to pull us out. But this is going to come more than just us. This is going to be bigger than us. And I, and my concern is, the, my, we should worry about it because I think our code department is going in the wrong direction. That, their, their goal is safety, UCC codes, rental housing maintenance, which is, which is okay, they're going in a different direction altogether, and I don't know why.
Okay, okay. To answer your point, we have, I think Nigel, your public safety?
Yeah.
Would you please bring that to you?
Oh, you will, you'll hear it, Nigel, I'm sure. Has public safety, did public safety review this before it came to us?
Yeah, I think so.
They did?
I think so.
Yeah, but he's added several things since then. And, and I'm, I'm curious as to what the motives are. The, the thing about the utilities, that, that could be more, that could be more of a hassle. That started as a Climate Action Committee technical advisory group of six Penn State employees, well, I think they're not all Penn State employees, and they weren't all Rothrock Forests. But anyhow, it was, started with a comment made by someone, what if we asked the, the tenants, how much their, how much their electric bills, their, their utilities were, so that the new tenants can see what it is? That was just a comment. It, it blew up, and now it's part of this particular program. Why? Why?
Well, the Borough Council wanted to do it. I mean, that's why, that's why it's in their section.
So Borough Council approached Walter on this, about the, about the utility bill, utilities?
I don't know if they approached Walter, but.
Well, somebody must have approached him.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there was a big mob of people supporting tenant rights.
Okay, well, okay, are we going to be, is our code department going to be a tenant's right people, are they going to be property maintenance, or are they going to UCC?
It's health, welfare, and safety.
Not, tenant landlord.
That's what ordinance is.
The leases are not, health and safety, that's it.
But let me, let me, let me move here. We are not going to solve this tonight.
No, I'm just bringing it up.
And it is something that.
Just bring it up, it's not going to go away.
You need to bring that to your committees on cog.
It's not going to go away.
And the general forum, if you want to do that, but I think tonight we can decide, we can ask Nigel to look into it.
Just a second, that was my discussion, and it will be, you may hear more of it, that's all.
All right. Danny, you're.
I've got five items.
Five? Five?
These are follow-up items for the last three years that have not been accomplished.
Okay.
We authorized Todd to investigate the purchase of a new vehicle for his son's.
We're doing that.
Three years ago.
That's in progress.
We're doing it now.
Okay. I had found in an interim, two vehicles that met his criteria, but it was dead, it dropped, didn't do it, so I'm glad you're moving on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you give me an update on no parking signs along Brush Valley Road?
No, I can't.
From Rock Hill Road all the way through to the College Township?
I don't, no, I can't, I don't know anything about it.
How many months ago was it we passed that? Half a year?
Well, when did he build the, when did he build the house?
I'm trying to remember.
When that guy built the house down there?
Oh, oh, half, better than half a year ago.
Is it, are you saying there should be or there shouldn't be?
We authorized it.
Oh, well, if it's in the code, we should be put off signs.
Well.
I'll get the specific location from it.
Okay.
Brian?
Yes. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Peter doesn't know anything about this. I can, I can fill him in on that tomorrow.
Okay.
And I, I think there was an issue about the amount of signs that would be needed per the Uniform Traffic Code regulations. But I'll update Peter on it tomorrow, Danny.
Yeah, we were told last few months ago. We need an extra.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I'll, I'll update Peter on it tomorrow.
Okay, good. We also talked about, and I think Jerry was involved, the Carolyn Anderson water runoff issue coming down Brush Valley Road?
Correct.
What's the status of that? They were going to put a trench along Brush Valley or something to?
So if you look at historical photographs, you look at water movement coming off of Gillian's Fields?
The lane, yeah.
Yeah, so water comes into that area, and the design drawings for Hilbert Road show that there to be swales installed on Hilbert Road, private road, at Hilbert Road expense.
As it goes up the hill.
As it goes up the hill and as it starts at Brush Valley Road and has that little dip. So those swales are not there, water that comes down through can jump the road, can approach her property. Donnie and his guys are doing, you know, quarterly maintenance, I'm under the impression that they're keeping those pipes open and doing as much as they can within the 33-foot right of way. But at this point in time, there's no, no investment of township resources in doing any structural repairs to a private road.
Yeah, I understand that, but we were talking about Donnie doing something to.
Well, we looked at trying to get an easement from.
Gillard.
Yes, and he is not willing to provide us with an easement. So outside of doing some type of condemnation to create an avenue through which we can take water and produce a swell and get it out of that area, but we're doing that for private property purposes, not for public safety purposes. Brush Valley Road does not have a water problem on Brush Valley Road.
Okay. An observation, I talked to Amy about this, the metal roof on this building?
Yeah.
Is in pretty serious need for paint.
Yeah, it is. I've looked at it.
Is that in some?
There's maintenance, I'll tell you what, there are maintenance issues with your property here.
Oh, yeah.
It should be taken care of, it should be taken, you did a fantastic job on the garage. You need to pay more attention.
Our physical plan here is, unless it's in ideal condition. Last item, I, I talked to our previous manager about, it's, it's an interesting issue. We had talked about using our township logo on all our new vehicles.
Uh huh.
On the side, rather than just painting our township.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, I think we can do better than we have right now.
Sure, I mean, that's not hard.
They chose not to do that.
Not they, we did, we.
We did?
We didn't, we never talked about it.
Oh, yes, we have talked about it. They chose not to do it.
Who did?
Well, whoever drives the trucks and paints the trucks. If we want them on there, we should be able to put them on there.
If you want it on there, we'll put them on there.
We, we got a new truck coming in on order.
I think it looks better with that, to tell you the truth. Looks more professional.
We can do better than painting our township on the side of a truck.
I agree.
So when that new vehicle comes in, could you pursue that?
We could put them in all our vehicles.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I didn't know it was an issue.
Well.
I didn't know anything about it, but yes.
Our previous manager and I talked about it two years ago.[1586.91]